This is the Pownell Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. Before I start, I'd like to go around the table and have everybody introduce themselves. John, if we could start with you, take a look at the camera, let them know who you are.
John Bishy.
Ryan Bizan.
Mike Slattery.
Sid Smithers.
Jessica Withrow.
Jim Winchester.
Rose Marie Pelletier.
Jim Sullivan with the Regional Planning Commission.
Michelle Peckro.
Thank you, guys. I'll quickly read the agenda for this evening. The first item is to approve this agenda. The second item is to review and approve the minutes of our regular meeting on January 21st, 2020. We'll be open to public comment, if there would be any, and then we'll go into a bylaw discussion with Jim Sullivan, Director VCRC. Part A will be to review, hey Megan, review our zoning maps. Part B is initial review of individual sections in the drafts that Jim has put together. The number five will be the mail, and then we will adjourn if we're lucky.
Move to accept.
At 7:30.
At 7:00.
Move to accept the agenda.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion or additions to the agenda? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unimposed. Any abstaining? If none, motion carries. Let's take a look at the January 21st minutes. The only thing I would add there is, I don't think Michelle was here.
I didn't win in Vegas, I brought back.
Oh, that's why you're...
She's in Vegas.
Oh, did you?
Too many people on the children's floor.
So do we have enough people here that were here, me, said Jim, Megan? Yeah, well, no, we don't. We only have four. No, Ronnie's here, I'm sorry. We have five.
Move to accept those minutes. Probably got a quorum.
Yeah, why, they're still a quorum? Okay. We have a motion and a second by Ronnie. Is there any further discussion? So the motion is made to amend it, just to add Michelle to board members absent. So with that in mind, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
And abstaining?
Abstained.
So who are these, John's abstaining, Michelle's abstaining?
And Rose.
And Rose Marie. Who, you were in Vegas too that night.
No, I wasn't on.
You know?
(laughing).
I think you told me you were going away. I'm pretty sure you said you were gonna miss a bunch of meetings, so I don't know why we didn't put you down.
No, it's all right. I'll let it go this time.
Yeah, okay, good. I don't see anyone here from the public to comment, so if we would like to, I'll introduce Jim Sullivan, Director of the Bennington County Regional Commission, so that he can continue his stellar work on our review. No pressure here, buddy.
So, we'll start out with the good news, is that after the last meeting, we made a few changes and additions, and have a first full draft of the bylaw done, so that's good news. Bad news now is we have to go over it all.
Yeah, I know. I know.
So the first thing that I wanted to do was some of the map changes, there are just a few that we made after the last couple meetings, and I want to go over those with you folks and see if we're on the, going in the right direction with that, or if you want to make some changes. So this map, and so we have, this says proposed Pownell zoning.
Right.
So we, you know, based on the consistency with the town plan, as well as our discussions here, we're suggesting a number of possible changes, and I'll go over those one at a time. So the first, the first one is, up in this north central part of Pownell, there is, here to fore, this little island of forest land that I would believe is set out because of, based on elevation, but it, you know, is a very small polygon, and was really surrounded by rural residential two land, and so Michael had indicated, you guys had even talked about it during the town plan, of just putting that into the RR2 and taking it out of the forest zone. So the map reflects that change. You see it says two rural residential two in the map legend, it's that double crosshatch.
So that must be off of Carpenter Hill Road somewhere.
Yeah.
Or Cold Storage Road, or somewhere.
It's on the east side of Carpenter Hill, probably quarter mile before the town line, maybe, is where it starts. So, yeah, beyond that, I can't tell you too much about it or exactly what's there, but it's a small area.
I know, and I remember that, and when we did the town plan, it just kind of was a little island unto itself, so I don't...
I think there may be a communications tower up there.
Yeah, Michael said something.
Maybe that's Tower Road.
Yeah, it's on Tower Road.
Tower off of it. Oh, that could be on, well, if it's on Tower Road, there's some houses there too, I think, right? So probably.
One house. Well, the house in the...
There's a couple houses when you first start up the road.
Yeah.
Then you walk to the end, there's a house up on the end.
Probably just before it, so it doesn't, the house isn't in the forest.
Isn't in the forest, yeah. Well, I mean, you know, it's no, I don't think it makes a huge difference which zone it's in, but it just seemed like an odd little island.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to motion on these changes?
Yeah, in one second. I'm trying to think if there's any downside to doing that. If you're the owner of that property, it frees you up a little bit more, you fall into RR2, so your development rights are more liberal than...
It's totally easier to develop in RR2 than it is to in forest, yes.
Correct, correct.
But if it's so elevated anyway?
I was gonna say, if the, if it's more than a 20% grade, then there's gonna be further restrictions anyway.
We don't know who owns it.
Well, I think...
I don't think it matters.
I don't. Well, I'll...
I guess we're not gonna get insulted with them.
I'll accept a motion to change that to RR2.
So moved.
A further discussion on that little chunk of forest land going to RR2.
So if it goes into RR2, it's, so it's basically, it's already in RR2, but before we had it labeled as forest?
No, it's surrounded by RR2. It's forest. Yeah.
It's forest. So...
So it's probably based, Michelle, on elevation right there, it's probably pretty close to...
Most of the...
Well, I don't know, because the forest on the east side is different than the forest on the west side on...
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly, most of the forest district boundaries are based on...
Is it a high elevation?
Yeah.
Why don't you pass this down, Michelle, because she can see much more clearly.
So when you're saying that it can be developed, could that be, hey, it's a high spot right in the area to put windmills? Like they did out there?
No, you can't. The only place that we can have windmills is like right there, and it's one little tiny like that.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's no windmills there.
Unfortunately, well, I guess I'll say unfortunately, you can't, you can't regulate through zoning wind turbines or...
You can't.
We know how to protest, we're good.
But you can, but you can certainly let the puck know that...
Yes, well...
What is it, like, didn't we write into the town plan that...
About special rights and things.
That doesn't have 248 superseded anyways, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, well, your...
And it could there too.
It's your plan.
Yeah. All right, so if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of this going to RR2 and being eliminated from the forest zone, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay.
Okay, so now the more, the more geographically extensive proposed change is on the, on the west side of town, you know, again, that, that forest district boundary is based on an elevation line, and I can't tell you exactly what elevation line it was, but...
1300, I think.
1300 on that side, I think.
Well, Michael's looking at it, Michael Batcher in our office, who worked on your town plan with you, and he indicated that, you know, and there's some language in the town plan that specifically talks, I think, about, you know, the...
Development.
Steep slopes and restricting development, and, you know, it turns out that that, that crosshatched area, and the legend says two forests, is currently RR2. There's no development there now, there's, there's no houses or anything in that area, and it's, it's very steep, but it's at a lower elevation.
Right.
And, you know, some of it's, you know, a lot of, a big chunk of it's conserved lands too, not all of it certainly, some of it's...
Part of land trust.
Privately owned, some of it's land trust, some of it's privately owned. But, so Michael went and used the, like, where the slope breaks up to 20%, above 20% going up the side of the mountain, and roughly put the line along there, at least until it intersected with the existing village, he didn't take anything away from that, you know, the village or the industrial, or the rural residential district, rural residential one districts. And so that's that, that green crosshatched area would be a proposal to add that to the forest district from RR2, but I know that's not something that we had specifically talked about when we were going through the bylaws, so that's just an idea at this point.
But this is an area with 20% plus slopes.
Yeah, that's what Michael used to identify the boundaries.
But you can develop in 20% plus, but there's a list of, there's, there's quite a stringent list.
Yeah, you can, there's, we have some language now in the special regulations about, you know, developing at steep slopes.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, he tried to, when he drew it, you know, intentionally stayed away from areas like down in the southern part, where there is existing development in that area.
Right, further down.
So he really picked up area where there's no current development, where the slope's over 20% that's, that's adjacent to the forest, but, you know, I'm...
It's Palmer's, Burrington's.
Yeah, so I, I just, I'm putting it out there as something that we interpreted as, as our understanding being more consistent with the town plan, but that is really 100% your call on what you want to do, if you want to look into that further, if you want more information on the affected areas, or, doesn't matter, but that was, that was one to look at.
Well, when you change it, you're changing the development rights on somebody's piece of property, and if somebody wanted to build a house on the hillside right before the current forest zone, they would be unable to do that and put plumbing and things like that to it. So I don't know enough about the land, I can picture it, because I've been over there, but I don't know exactly where it starts and where it ends, I know it grades up very quickly, and, and goes into that elevation very quickly anyway. So Alan Palmer's got a camp that's got a road, that you take your truck down there, and you're afraid of falling this way on the way down, and I think that's part of the land, nobody's gonna build anything there, he's up on the flats with a camp.
Okay. I mean, we could, we could also bring in maps with the proposed boundaries on top of, like, aerial photography, so you could see...
If you have that ability, I wouldn't... Does everybody agree with me? I'll go around, but I don't...
What are we proposing to do here?
Just to change it to forest.
Change it from rural residence to forest.
To forest. We're going the opposite way of the one we just did.
Okay, yeah, I think it makes, yeah.
Because it just, it just grades up very, very quickly, and would be very difficult, number one, just logistically to develop, number two, we have some rules and regulations about development, like proper drainage and everything. Is it hot in here, or is it...
It's boiling.
It is warm.
I can alter it down.
We're cooking Ronnie right there. We're gonna turn him over.
Your hair's gonna fire.
For once to the other side.
For a while, it felt really good after.
Back at the school. It was that down here, that was, that thing wasn't running. I didn't think it got that cold, though, all of a sudden, but maybe it did.
That's how you turn the heat down?
Yeah.
If you're at the library.
Very high tech.
Let me guys know if you get caught. That sort of, that thing over there doesn't...
Thought I was gonna have to go back to St. Peter's there.
Helping it out a little bit.
So anybody else, I mean, that's my feeling, I would like to know just a little bit more than, you know, I, I could even make a few phone calls and bring a map down, if you can overlay an aerial map, and I can go to Burrington's and go to Palmer's and...
So we can probably get most of the parcel boundaries too.
Ask them if they have high-tech plans.
Sure.
That's what I was gonna suggest, if you can do it at a larger scale with the tax map boundaries.
Yep.
So that we can see where it is.
I'd wanna know where that is, because they just sold over 100 acres up there, they're going to Pratt Nielsen.
Yep.
The guy's building a house right up there. It's way up there.
Okay, well, could very well be in that area.
Where is that up in Carmel, like?
Yeah, so we gotta make sure.
I can't see stealing the property off of the land, I believe in liberties.
Yeah.
You know, forest, we got, we got enough forest. We got steep places behind my houses, straight up and down, you can't build nothing there.
And by the way, what would be the harm of leaving it? Without doing all this work, having him do all the work, why don't we just eliminate that? All due respect to Michael Batcher.
Well, it's difficult to develop anyway, I suppose that would be the argument for leaving it, so, you know, it's like...
Well, they've been working on this project up there for two years. Giant excavator up there and a huge bulldozer, they run electricity up for long ways.
I don't know where that is. It's gonna be a huge...
How many bears are? It's called Crow Hill, it's up Montgomery.
Oh, up in here.
No, it ain't by Crow Hill, you go past the realtors place, it used to be the realtors' place, and keep on going, head for the snow hole.
Oh.
You know the road that goes to Snow Hole?
I don't know the road here.
Is this the guy who's the basketball coach?
No, no, he's... No, he's got a piece down on the flat.
He's next to... Is this guy building in the forest zone up there?
I don't know, I question it, because I was on the board when they were talking about the height, and they told Pratt Nielsen that when they came here and they said, wow, you're up, it's too high. And they were arguing about the, why is it higher over here than it is over there?
Well, I remember that.
That's another statement that I'd like to make. Why is it higher? You can build higher on this side than you can over there.
And if I...
That stupidity. But the guy owning, a guy, a prominent guy in Pownell owned a lot of land up in that no-build zone, that's why you can go higher over here.
Oh, really?
Okay, I know that for a fact, years ago.
Factored Givernarchi.
So somebody, somebody owned land and they...
That was up in the forestry zone, there's already houses up in the forestry zone over here. And that's above the, that's way above the height of where this guy was.
Or grandfathered.
It got put down to be a caretaker's house, and they got away with that. We're going back all the time.
Okay, well, we can't do anything about that tonight, I mean, we can just leave that the way that it is, it's gonna be tough to develop anyway.
We'll leave it, I mean, yeah, you know...
Well, they just sold that property, over 100 and some acres, couple of hundred acres probably, they just sold it there. Now this guy's building a, and I'm sure that's gonna be a house comparable to Sid's.
A mansion?
A mansion.
A mansion.
We're only talking about down here, though.
I know that, but I'm telling you.
He's built one on Sunset Drive, too.
Mike, I've been up there, I got a piece of land up there.
Good taxpayer.
Oh, we gotta leave that alone.
Are you planning on...
Nah, nah, I'm below this guy.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, the, yes, that's entirely appropriate, your, your point that is really difficult to develop and might not be able to get a permit for septic system or whatever up there is legit, I mean, that, you know, it was at one point the concern was more with the steepness and the shallyness of the soil, concerns over water quality, both erosion and failed septic systems. You know, now with the new environmental standards and requirements, it's maybe less, you know, some of the concern is more about, you know, remote scattered development and the, you know, the cost of providing services and emergency service access and things like that, so, so there's different ways to look at it, but, you know, I can certainly bring it in with, with parcel maps and, and aerial photos and see what's...
If it's not too much trouble, we'll take a look at it.
So, yep.
Yeah. I agree with Ronnie on that, I don't want to take away anybody's RR2 rights to build, if, you know, with technology today, they might be able to build it up there and have proper drainage and things.
A question, if we were to change it, wouldn't these people who purchased the land and have begun, they've gotten a permit to build already?
If they have a permit.
If they have a permit.
I don't know if they got a permit or not, I'm not the zoning administrator.
No, okay, well, if they had a permit, wouldn't they be grandfathered in because at the time of the permit?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, unfortunately, if they, if they just bought the land and didn't buy for a permit, then different story.
Well, they bought the land a little over a year ago, they've been built, working up there for over a year, probably here and now.
Hopefully, hopefully they've been building up there.
It's just a big foundation at this point, right? There isn't any house yet.
They got the hole in the ground, and the concrete's been bought up there, that's all, and the electric's been bought up there.
And the boys are doing it, so.
Hopefully they have a house.
You talk about where you go up Montgomery, right?
Yeah, you keep going straight up through.
Montgomery is, that's where you start up that road, yeah. You know where Paul Harsh used to be? You know where Popovich's place is? That's how they appraised all the town in Pownell, so it's so expensive, because he paid way too much for it, so everybody's mountain land was worth a million dollars on account of that guy, the second-winningest coach in basketball.
That's right.
I only know Shem, Shania and Greg Popovich.
And a real curmudgeon too, this guy is funny, you ought to hear him with the press. Oh, my God, is he pretty?
Because he paid too much for his land, and made him bitter.
He's mad all the time.
No, he didn't care, but it raised all the property values of the other people in the town. They say, well, if you can get a half a million dollars or a million dollars for it...
We're gonna put an hole, so we take a closer look.
I move we take no action on the suggestion for this strip of RR2.
We have a movement with no action, we have a second.
More info.
Any, any further discussion? If none, all those in favor of tabling it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think, I think the rest of this is gonna be easier.
Maybe by 7:30. Maybe not.
Well, the rest of the maps, this map anyway.
You might work up sleeping people.
So, so if you remember, when we were going through the bylaw, we determined that there wasn't a lot of difference between the village and commercial as far as uses and dimensional standards, so we basically just merged those together in the bylaw, so the map reflects adding the commercial to the village, so those yellow areas that say two village, those are formerly commercial areas, so those are added to the village areas, it, it doesn't change the uses really, because it just creates one district out of two, so that simplifies a lot of it.
I move we change the yellow colored areas on the map...
To the red?
From RR2 to...
No, from industrial.
I'm sorry.
From industrial.
Two village.
Former commercial.
Two village.
Commercial, which doesn't show up on the legend, two village.
Yeah, so, so the yellow strips now, instead of being commercial, are all going into being village.
So the village is a really genuinely mixed-use village district now.
It's confusing.
Yes, it is a bit confusing.
Well, we're trying to un-confuse it, is what we're trying to do.
If you started, when this is done, the map won't have, like, the, the extra colors and the twos, all the twos will be the same as what they're turned into, so they'll be...
How you gonna decide on that when you don't know where it is?
The what?
We do know where it is.
I'm a simple guy, how you gonna decide on that when you don't know where it is? I'm looking at a map, so what, that's Pownell? I don't see any property names there, I don't see anything.
Well, this is all, they're all, they're all the existing zoning district boundaries, we're not changing the district boundary.
Okay, I can't see what, well, you just said you want to do, where would that be in commercial?
And it's gonna be village, and you're gonna be able to do everything you did in commercial in village.
The, the point is that the district...
That's what we're changing, the definition.
Not really changing the geography of the district boundaries at all, we're just merging them together.
They were getting, I'm getting back into the liberties thing, see, I want to make sure we're not taking anything away from a person who owned a piece of property here.
So we're actually adding...
If he can, if he can do the same thing as he could have done, if you've got a piece of property and you think it's commercial, and all of a sudden they say, oh, no, that's village, well, you know what?
Anybody...
He can do...
Anybody what? Just gotta have a brain, I don't have one.
Wouldn't they grandfather in?
He can do, run with this change, he can do more.
That's correct.
If he was in the yellow zone, he will be able to do more than he could before, so he's getting more options, nonetheless.
And, and I will tell you this...
So in other words, you can do more in village than you can in commercial.
Well, they were, they were...
Well, because we've added commercial definitions to it.
Yeah, they were almost identical before, and all we did was, was bring in...
Because I, all I know is, a lot of times you see a sign that'll have commercial property, why would they put that on here if it wasn't worth, if it was worth less than village property?
There's, there's a lot of commercial...
Has to be something there.
Well, there's a lot of commercial property in the village district. The village district doesn't mean, it, it's a mixed-use district, so it allows commercial, it allows light industrial, it allows residential, it allows a mix of those uses, and really, the commercial district did too, you know, it was just, it was just more along the roadside.
What if somebody in, so if it gets moved in, and somebody builds, put, put the yellow into the red, and then somebody builds a house there, but then somebody wants to build some obnoxious commercial location next to them, they're stuck with it being there next to them?
Well, we may have something to say about the obnoxious part, you know, because there are some performance standards and...
But there has to be some rights, property, you know, if you buy a piece of property, you have to have some rights to do what you want with it.
Yeah.
I, I have to say this, we spent a lot of time with Jim, here as a planning commission, on discussing merging those two things. It was done over three or four different meetings, and the consensus was that it took all of the, all of the highlights of commercial and mixed it in with village, so they are evenly matched, so there's not, it's not gonna exclude what you could do in commercial before and what you might have done in village before, you're gonna be able to still do them both. The racetrack is gonna be mixed-use, same thing, commercial, village, all in, in one, so...
We can, when we get to the village district and just, ah, section 5.4, we can, we can go over all the uses, and I think you'll see, you know, that, you know...
Right, and we're not voting on it.
Retail stores.
We gotta a million miles to go before this becomes law.
Professional offices, all those things are allowed, so, okay, so that's...
Maybe not a million.
That's the, the village change, merge, if you will.
But we, we talked about this the last two meetings we've been here.
All right, listen, I, I will entertain a motion that we do that for the purpose of putting together a final draft for the public to ultimately review.
Because we still have to go back and, I gotta bring in the other map, so, you know, so...
Or we can table this one until you come back with the other map.
Before we finalize it, but, I mean, you can, you can say, you can always change your mind at this point, so...
And you'll have an opportunity to go back and see those definitions and how we merge those definitions.
I was just sitting here thinking, I wonder if we're doing this backwards, if we shouldn't go through the bylaw, look at the definitions of village zone, what can happen there, compare it to what used to be able to happen in commercial, and then vote to make a change.
Well, yeah, I think that's fine, I will speak to the fact, though, that that's not the way that we did it, that we had the discussion about village and commercial, and RR2, and RR1, and forest, boiled it down, agreed to merge those two, he produced a map that reflected the wishes of the, of the PC, or of the members that were present at that time, so...
The, the, yeah, I mean, the whole, I mean, I guess, it was my first review of it, and I was going through, trying to figure out how to organize and simplify the bylaws, and right away, it just occurred to me, I went through the village district, then I went through the commercial district, and I said, not a lot of difference between the two, so I went back and I looked at them again, and I said, there's still not a lot of difference, so I basically just suggested we just merge them. Merge them geographically and the uses. So, um, but you know, we we can, um, you know, we'll tentatively do it, but you know, you guys can.
Yeah, it can always be, change back. I mean, there's no doubt.
When we go through.
Ronnie wants to go through that, if he sees something in there, a couple of words that we missed and he says, whoa, wait a minute, guys, uh, you're you're losing this commercial flair here.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not, nothing, it's no, I mean, you got three um, really pretty large um, vill- village districts now. Yep, so we'll, we'll, we can do aerial maps for the whole area. I'm assuming we have all those coverages. Now, the only thing that was a little bit different was when um, Michael was, uh, so Michael was doing shenanigans with his maps again. When he was um, putting these maps together for me and merging the districts, he did note that the southernmost extent of the existing commercial district along Route seven, see, it was kinda like squeezed in between um, the RR one down there and and uh, Route seven. And he said that that part that he has shaded as RR one was commercial, so, you know, that's.
That square?
That little, that little rectangle, no, that that's, that's all um, RR one. It's this little.
It's this little edge of it?
Little bit that's right next to it.
So the yellow originally went down to the state line?
Right, and and he said that, so that li- that last little bit there, that last.
So he put dotted lines here to show.
Quarter, half mile or whatever it was.
I don't see anything.
Well, it's interesting, like, on your, like, on this, on this little map, the colors show up as really different, you see?
Oh, it is different. Absolutely. Now I see it.
So he said, and I asked him specifically this, I was a little concerned, I was like, are there any existing commercial properties in that part that he he shows as changing to RR one, um, you know, which is your higher density rural residential district? And he he said he didn't think so, as near as he could tell, so I I certainly wanna double check that to be sure. Um, cause I know you're starting to get down there toward hillside house and stuff, you I don't, you don't wanna put that in a rural residential. But he said, he said on his maps, the area that was added is like really steep hillside. It goes up from Route seven and then there's some residential development up on.
The gravel pit would be the most interesting place down there.
Yeah, I guess now.
That's a little after it.
I know, it's still, it's could be developed.
Industrial, is that what we call?
Could be developed.
Yeah, cer- certainly could be.
Commercial.
Well, all I know is, I think my brother's garage is in that spot.
It is.
Well, it's right, right next to it.
And you know what? The state said, that's commercial.
Yeah.
Mister, that's commercial. We went through all kinds of hell to get a permit to the state. And that's the thing I'm for is liberties.
Yes.
And I'm for equal opportunity for everyone.
Okay.
See, and if you got a piece of commercial property, I bought a piece up here on Route seven for that reason. It was supposed to be commercial. Maybe I wanna put a hot dog stand there or something, but I'll be able to if it's commercial. I'm not so sure I can if it's rural residential. That's the only thing I don't understand.
So what we really need to do is to make sure that that, that that um, commercial to RR one, check if there's any, any existing commercial properties and if there are, we need to take it out.
I would bet, I would bet this ends short of the Besson Auto Garage, Auto Shop.
You think that ends short of it? What, the other part or the blue part? The green part?
The yellow part in.
The green part does not, I mean, the green part includes the Besson Auto Shop.
That's right, it does. And that is commercial property there. The state already distinguished that very clearly to me.
Well, they did it by looking at our maps, so.
It was gas land for crying out loud.
But the gas land was abandoned.
Don't matter, it was gas land, it was commercial property.
But if it's nonconforming, well, I'm not gonna debate that.
Yeah, let's, let's not go there.
So, so.
But it is conforming. But they're there, they're there.
So, so I think, so I think what, I'll bring in, I'll bring in aerials for with parcels a- and that area too.
That'll be great.
And and if that just shows that there's too much commercial there, we'll just um, keep it in village with the rest of it. Yeah.
We can't have too much commercial. We're trying to get on the map. Can't get on the map, we probably guess residential, bedroom community.
Well, okay, you know, there there's.
See, there's differences there between the way people think. I think we do need stores and we need, the Sturts was the best thing that ever happened to Pownell.
Yeah.
You couldn't even get a, you couldn't get any gas or a breakfast sandwich until noon time for crying out loud in this town.
I hear you. Well, so, so, yeah, and and you're, you know, fortunate, your your village district uh, you have three and they're, they're fairly um, extensive and they all, they all allow um, a wide variety of commercial uses. So.
So we don't have anything we designate as a commercial district anymore. We have village district and industrial.
Yeah, and and I do, I do wanna say that um, as far as that that naming stuff, and I know that people get hung up on that because historically, we've always had like commercial zoning designations, which is, I think, really, i- is really from a planning perspective, very unfortunate because the implication is that that's commercial and it's supposed to be commercial uses only, but it's really a mixed use district and it always has been. So it allows residential uses, it allows commercial uses, it allows professional uses, it allows light manufacturing uses. So to call it commercial is really kind of misleading.
Yeah.
So that's why we've been trying to go in all of our towns, not just Pownell, to a designation like village that more.
We can mix those.
Represents a mix of different kinds of uses are all allowed, so that's, it's kind of, you actually, the the trend in general in in zoning is to get away from lots of um, these uh, single use named or single use type districts and encourage more mixed use districts, so especially in village areas.
To Ronnie's point, though, when a, when a realtor puts up their sign, they generally put commercial on the bottom.
Which is fine, that's, that's, but that is, but that, that's, that's the part that's confusing.
Sure, I know that, but that's the deception.
That's the, the, the kind of mixing up the notion of the zoning district, which is our planner's fault because we always named them commercial districts with the type of use on the individual parcel, you know, so you mean, you can have a, you can have a commercial property in a purely residential zone if it's an existing commercial property and you could advertise it if you're selling it as a commercial property, you know, as long as the use continues. So it's, i- i- I I totally understand why it's confusing. And hopefully, like, within a generation, it won't be confusing anymore because we all have gotten away from this notion of, you know, it's just commercial. You know, because it's really, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be the most open ended district that you've got. It allows the most.
Correct.
Variety of uses, so.
So if my, if I'm understanding correctly, the issue is not so much where we're changing the yellow into the red. Making the, what was commercial into village.
Right.
The real concern, which addresses, I think, your concern, is if we changed it into residential.
Right, so that very, that southern tail part down there, we we.
Yeah, we gotta be careful.
We've gotta be very careful down there, so, so we're gonna bring in the the photos and the maps and make sure that we're not moving anybody's um, existing.
Into RR one.
Uses into a residential zone, yeah.
Gotta make room for the pot store.
Is that coming? Is that coming?
It would be strange if it weren't.
Certainly, it's coming someday.
For an adult bookstore, we gotta get a headshot. You do remember that, don't you?
It was a, it was a landmark, I think.
Yeah.
Welcome to Vermont.
Yeah, welcome to Vermont.
We blew it up.
Boy, did it blow up to.
So, so the other map, the other map, and and this one is, to Sid's point, I think, is, is, we can, we can look at this um, very briefly, but it's not gonna make a lot of sense until we dive into the regulations and the regulations are um, bare. But these are the, the flood hazard areas and the river corridor areas. So the flood hazard areas, the map does not change from your current one, basically. It's, it's the state, well, it's really the federal flood um, FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, flood insurance rate map boundaries for the special flood hazard area. Um, the, that's, what is it, the A and AE areas. Those are, the, the yellow, the little bits of yellow you see there really aren't um, uh, reg- uh, regulatory flood hazard areas, they're just kind of informational. Um, so those, that, that area really doesn't change from what you you have now. What changes is, um, and it doesn't show up great on the scale map and especially in your dark shaded ones, is the um, is the one that we haven't really decided on yet is the river corridors. So the river corridor is a whole new section of the bylaw um, that creates a, a new class. It's, it's that area that um, remember, we we talked about it at that one meeting at the firehouse where the, the, the state is really pushing, encouraging towns to div- to adopt river corridor um, regulations in addition to their flood hazard area regulations. Um, because a lot of the, 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 the flood hazard areas, they, they don't necessarily.
Reach into.
Fully overlap. Some of the river corridors are outside. And also the, the, the standards for the flood hazard areas are a little bit, although they're incredibly complicated, they're like six pages long. Um, but the, they're allow a little bit um, more flexibility in where you can build than do the river corridors. And we can go over that when we get to the river corridor regs, but the river corridors um, are really, unless you're near existing development um, or within designated village areas, so Pownell has, well, in these areas, designated village areas in Pownell and North Pownell. You know, you can develop in those designated areas, but they're pretty small areas. Um, and outside those areas in the river corridors, you're limited to developing like in between existing buildings or in the flood shadow of existing buildings.
What does that mean, flood shadow?
Well, it's like downstream from the building. So, so basically, the, the whole point of the river corridor is, is identifying areas where there's a high risk of damage from heavy duty erosion, where stream banks will probably, um, the river engineers will say inevitably, you know, wash away the land, so anything that's there will be washed away and destroyed. So they really don't want folks to build there, the state does it.
Anymore than in the flood plain.
Well, in the flood plain, actually, you can build there if you.
Follow the rules.
Floodproofed house. Floodproofed, so it has to be elevated, you have to have extra.
Have doors that let the water go through.
Yes, exactly. It's the same, it's the same standards anywhere for the flood insurance program. Um, but the river corridors, they would uh, prefer that you not, you not build there. Now, it's not a requirement. You don't have to have river corridor regulations. If you do have river corridor regulations, then when you have um, you know, like a, a declared emergency and there's a lot of damage to municipal infrastructure and stuff, then if you have river corridor regulations, the town gets like an extra five percent reimbursement. Um, uh, and the, you know, so instead of, instead of getting, you know, eighty percent, maybe eighty-five percent.
Which beginning on page twenty-eight, Jim has taken a liberty to put in here, both our flood hazard and river corridor district.
Yeah, so we'll, we should probably take those up when we, when we get to them in order, but you know, just because it's a map and and I did wanna say, though, I, I, I had Michael pull off the current um, data on um, buildings, building counts within those areas in Pownell. And um, so in the uh, in the special flood hazard area, so that's, unless you want people to not have access to federal flood insurance anymore, there's not much you can do about that, but there's um, uh, I guess a hundred and sixty-four buildings in the special flood hazard area. The vast majority, a hundred and seventeen of them are mobile homes. Um, and there's thirty-three single family homes, so a hundred and fifty are basically single family homes, either mobile homes or stick built homes.
Thirty-three are single family?
Yeah. And um, yeah, so it's, you know, there's a farm, there's a couple of commercial um, properties, um, you know, uh, there's a church, apparently, also industrial buildings, so there's a lot, there's a lot in there. Now, in the, in the river corridor, um, there's also, um, there's also quite a few, not as many, but there's quite a few. Now, those, those existing buildings, again, it's not like they go away, you know, um, they, they can continue to exist and we can go over the somewhat confusing diagrams, so it shows, you know, where, but you can build accessory buildings. You can build a new building between two existing buildings in the river corridor as long as they're within a certain distance of each other. I mean, there's all sorts of complicated stuff, so you can do it, but if you have, if you're outside of a village center and it's just open land that looks perfectly good and developable, but it's in the river corridor, you're probably gonna have a harder time building there. So.
From the state's point of view.
Well, if you put it in your zone.
If we put it in there.
Yeah, yeah. So again, you don't have it in your bylaw now, it's not your existing regs, so it's, it's, it's something to.
Okay.
Something to think about when we get to it.
And you can, you you mentioned some um, state reimbursement or something, but you can go through all of that for us when we get to that section to determine whether we even wanna have it.
Yeah.
If it makes sense to have it, of course, which it sounds like it.
Yeah, I, I think that's a heavy duty enough section, that flood hazard, that we really probably should have a whole meeting just about flood hazard area and river corridors.
We gotta bring Badger back for that, or?
We, we might, you know, we might wanna, we might wanna actually get the state flood plain manager.
Oh, yeah.
To come in and talk about it or answer your questions anyway.
Okay.
You know, they, they, you know, we didn't, we, Michael and I didn't dream up these um, flood hazard and river corridor regulations.
You didn't.
No. I organized, I organized them um, to put, to fit them into your zoning bylaw because they did, they were, but they're a template from, from the state.
In preparation for that, though, we could go over, you know, that whole section beginning on page twenty-eight, all the way through the river corridor and 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 have a list of questions for John, is that his name?
John Broker Campbell.
John Broker Campbell.
Yeah.
If we, if we can get him down here and then.
Yeah, actually, in a, in a strange way, the river corridor stuff is, it's more, it's, it's more restrictive in a way, but it's also a lot easier to understand. The, the special flood hazard area regulations are, you know, that has, like Sid mentioned, it has all those engineering standards about, you know, f- um, flood storage and capacity and, and height and, yeah, that downstream elevation increases. It's just like, I wouldn't wanna be a zoning administrator having to try to administer it, that's, I'll say, so.
Okay.
Like, Michael, he looks like, holy smokes, what is all, it's a whole new section.
I'll tell you, Michael, uh, yeah, he, he should be here for that presentation now, and we need to get him, if we haven't done so already, a copy of the, of all of this so that he can start to look at it. And the other thing I was thinking about, we need to get this to the rest of the DRB members too. They should start reviewing all of this compared to our, our current one, so that they know this is just a draft, there's a lot of work.
It's all online, just send the link.
Yeah, just send them, yeah. It's all online, so it'd be easy enough to do, you don't have to copy it.
I think, I think it's a, definitely, it's a good idea of DRB. I mean, the, the one thing I would say about the flood hazard and the river corridor stuff is, you know, you you do, you do have the ability, anytime there's a, a zoning permit application that's filed for a project in that area, then the zoning administrator can and I would dare say should um, shoot a copy of that application off to the regional flood plain manager and and ask for some, ask for some support.
Do you have a name? Who is that?
That, that probably is John Broker Campbell, but there's probably other people in the office that could, could help with it.
John's the one that we're gonna try and get down here to.
Yeah, I, you know, when I was a zoning.
He was scheduled to be here.
Yeah, and he couldn't make it for whatever reason.
Snowed or something.
Yeah, something. But um.
Then it rained.
I tell you, when I was a zoning administrator, I, I used to call on the, the regional flood plain manager all the time.
Yeah.
I don't think many people do anymore, but it was, yeah, I mean, I felt much better about it, you know, as like, and part of it was. As like, and part of it was, you know, the, the floodplain boundaries, um, well, back in that day, you know, we didn't have the mapping technology we do now, but, you know, you know, the floodplain boundaries will flow, you know, kinda go through the middle of a lot, and you might not know, you know, exactly where the, the building footprint's gonna be relative to the boundary, and I always said, get the, get the flood engineer up here.
Better for the resident, too, if they don't move ahead or something like that.
So, um, anyway, so that's
Well, I was reading that, I just have one little minor question, what is flood storage? I, I was reading the
Okay, yeah, so, so, um, when, so in the, one of the, the functions of, uh, the floodplain or the what's the flood hazard area?
Holds water.
Is to, to hold back water. So if you, if you build, um, like a house in the flood hazard area or the flood
You're gonna take up a certain number of square feet of available storage.
Right.
And you have to replace it.
Right, so
Or when you put a parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, so, so places, they're like, you know, you, you do that and
Goes right over.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen people like, um, actually just like excavate into, in a field next to where they're building a house to replace the flood storage capacity.
Compensatory storage.
That's, that's it. There's a whole section in there that's actually not labeled correctly now, but there's a whole section on compensatory flood storage.
Cause it's very temporary, this storage, we hope, right?
Yeah, no, the idea is that it'll store the water and release it slowly downstream, yeah.
And some of it'll seep into the soil and things like that to help prevent floods.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so that's, that's a bit, that's a big one, and as I said, so we can try to get, um, John uh, and, and Michael, ideally, because Michael's actually a CFM two, certified floodplain manager. So we could get, and I am not. So, um,
Something for you to aspire to.
Yeah. There's still time.
It's a retirement project, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Ronnie's just a certified flood, household flood manager.
So, so now the
Water doctor.
I know, you guys got a lot of ideas, the state and everybody. They built a place up there in Bennetton on the hill. FWW, they had put in settling ponds. The water always ran down through, right down into the, right behind the Chevrolet garage, and down, right down, all the way down through. Oh, they had put in all these settling ponds. They couldn't even take the dirt and dispose of it. They gotta even store that on their property, the dirt where they dug out the settling ponds. So I think some of you people got some rainstorms. I think maybe you oughta have a, you know, maybe a lightning strike would help get rid of the storm. And the same thing, if you got a phrase, if I wanna build a place
What are you talking?
What are you talking about right now?
I'm talking about the idiocy of the things that are being done.
Were you directing at anybody here?
Huh?
Were you just directing it at our consultant?
Generalizing.
Well, I kept, you know, you people.
Well, you, I mean, you speak about the, the FWW property, and I don't, I, I can't really, I don't have any direct knowledge of that. I do know that, you know, that property was, um, an old landfill. So probably the, you know, the, the storage of the soil on site and the retention of the water and stuff probably has to do with, um, you know, the disturbance of the
Garbage.
The, yeah, the old solid waste facility.
Okay.
Right.
Either here or there, let's go.
Um, interesting. Um, so in going over the bylaw, so I, you know, I mean, I made an executive decision that, you know, as I was going through it, um, I, it underlined, uh, in your, in your draft, all this stuff that's underlined is, is new or changed language. Um, but I didn't keep in all the old language. Because it got really confusing, because some of the old language didn't really go away, it moved.
Right.
You know, and so I, we can go back to the old bylaw to see what, and some sections are completely gone away and
I tried to do that, that's tough.
It is, it, it got really, really confusing, but, I mean, we can, you know, grab copies of the old bylaws and let's look at
I got it.
Where are you, so this is tonight, we're gonna
Well, we should start.
Start, we just start.
So where would you propose to begin?
Section one.
Okay.
Page one.
Well, I thought, uh, section two was really
Section one is
Can't argue with section one.
Se- section one is one sentence, and we, we did change the, I did make a change in calling it the Pownell Land Use Bylaw instead of the Pownell Zoning Bylaw since we've incorp- incorporated the subdivision into the zoning. So it's now, it's zoning and subdivision, so we usually just call that the land use. So that, that was a big change in section one.
Makes sense?
Section two was
We got through that.
Yep.
Section two was a, a
Call it night.
A, a redraft of, redraft of the purpose statement, which is, you know, fairly standard. I think that we moved, um, economic prosperity, uh, up or highlighted that a bit more. Um, it, it, the, I think the previous, uh, purpose statement was a little bit more, um, about regulation and resources, and this one is more about, um, uh, econo- economic development and protecting resources and high quality of life, I mean, very general stuff, but hope, I know that, that one of the big purposes was, was economic, promoting economic development or enabling it, so I wanted to make sure that got up front.
Yeah.
Um, so, so section three, well, we see we got through the first two sections already.
Where's the next?
Way beyond.
So, and, and, um, if you, you know, if you've all, you know, read through this and, and have scribbled down comments, please, um,
Yeah, I got a couple.
Please jump in. So there, section
I did them by page, that's not
Well, it's, you know, if you have it, section, so three, one, three, one, three point two, there really weren't any changes. Applicability and compliance with the bylaw. Um, you know, I, I think in section three point three, access, that we just did some, um, uh, language changes to try to make it a little bit clearer, so that there's a sentence in there that talks about, this is about, you know, access where you have to have frontage on a public road or an easement. So, you know, it said, frontage, easement, or right-of-way must provide safe and unimpeded year-round access by motor vehicle, including fire and emergency vehicles. And I don't honestly remember what it said before, but that's fairly standard language. And then, um, section three point three point two, which in my, my printed out version is the top of page two. We had talked about that, I, I think, um, way back when, about access to private camps.
Right.
So that, that talked about that, that, that the right-of-way or easement could be just approved by the zoning administrator for access to a camp.
Yeah, we had that as an amendment back in two thousand and twelve. So, good, I was looking for them. Bless.
Section three point four, existing small lots. So, exist, existing small lots, um, uh, there's a reference to, uh, at the bottom of the first paragraph of variance, so since we're adding a section on waivers as applicable, you know, a, a variance or a waiver. Um, the, the rest of that is, um, there's a provision in, in state, um, planning in zoning law that deals with existing small lots and, and, uh, small lots coming under common ownership. And I think we talked about this one too, um, where I think, I think your bylaw previously had, the language could be read that they were necessarily merged if adjacent small lots came under common ownership. But there's a provision in state law that says, under certain circumstances, they can be, um, maintained as separate lots and conveyed separately, and that's A, B, C, and D are the conditions where they wouldn't have to be merged. That's out of, out of the state statute. Again, the section three point five, the non-conforming uses, we just, I think I just, um, updated the language with existed and conformed to all, it's just, um, can, again, consistent with the statutory provisions. That's all I have on the first two pages. Um,
So around three point five three?
Three point five three, reconstruction after damage, um.
Yeah, we changed a little bit, didn't we?
Yeah.
There he is.
So, so I, 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 I know that we talked about that, and, and, you know, it's the thing that, the specifics of which are required, but um, if there's damage, it says, construction needs to be completed within three years of commencement um, of the reconstruction after damage, and if it's not met within that time period, um, you have to get new zoning permit, kinda start all over.
Right, in fact, we had, uh, did we increase that from two years to three, I mean, that section?
I think we might have.
Um, fire under disaster, maybe reconstruct for use. If, no, begins, if, as long as it begins after three years. So we did discuss it though, and we figured if they're not gonna rebuild in three years, they're probably not gonna rebuild, right?
And then if they start three years after, then they have three years to complete it, so it's a total of six.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, get right at the end, uh,
Yeah.
Right on the
The day before the deadline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, now, um, three point seven, um, so we, um, talked a little, we, we, um, clarified under establishment of zoning districts, the purpose of establishing the zoning districts. We just kind of rewrote that to try to make it a little bit, uh, clearer, less, um, uh,
Wordy?
Wordy and regulatory sounding. Um, then the, um, the significant change there, I think, is that, um, a lot, there are few, a lot fewer districts than there used to be, so the commercial district is merged into the village district, and the, uh, wet, there was a wetlands and a
Wetland overlay.
Natural area overlay or something like that. There were those overlay districts are, those two overlay districts are gone.
Yeah, we had nine of them.
There's, there's possib- the possibility of the river corridor overlay, which of course is still up for discussion. So that was added, so that, that's changed. Um, so, um, three, seven, four, land underwater.
That I don't understand, that I just don't get.
Yeah, we just tried to, I, I don't recall what the previous language was, but it was
We got it.
Dress as fish.
Yeah, zoning dis- the old one was, uh, shall include any land under rivers, streams, lakes, or ponds lying within them where opposite tides of a river or stream lie in different districts. So the river goes up the middle of R one and R two, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's clear, that probably happens. Mike Gardner, he probably gets ten of those a week.
Go right, Mike?
What?
You get ten of them?
No.
It just tries to, it tries to be clear that you pick the center of whatever water body it is, it's the dividing boundary when there's a, a water feature that creates the boundary. Yeah, so, um,
It's just funny to call it like that.
Yeah. So, so then, in interpretation of the, the map, so I think, you know, one of the things that I, I thought we should be clear there, um, and we changed the wording, I think, was, um, you know, the zoning administrator is probably making the initial determination about where a district boundary line is. He's, he's the point person, and that's the person from, or the entity from whom you take appeals. So, um, so we wanted to make it clear that it's, you know, the zoning administrator, and then if somebody disagrees with the interpretation of the zoning administrator, then they appeal to the development review board. Um, and then
And you remove that from our, what used to be the planning commission.
I, you know, I think, I think, uh, I, you know, it was interesting, because I think that the, you know, it probably had defaulted to the planning commission, because people figured, well, the planning commission created the zoning district boundaries in the first place, but it may not have been anybody on the existing planning commission. And, and if somebody disagrees with the planning commission's determination, technically, then they would have to appeal it to like, uh, environmental court. Whereas if it's in a, the zoning administrator goes to the development review board, which I think probably makes more sense.
It's more efficient to
And then
Less expensive to
Yeah, less expensive, and, and then it's, um, and then those are the, the conditions or the, the factors that are supposed to guide the determination if there's a question about where the, where the boundary is. For, again, it's, it, it's not like we made that stuff up, it's fairly standard, uh, language. Um, next change I see is in condit- so conditional use. So there were performance standards having to do with noise under conditional uses, so, you know, we, I added noise under the opening paragraph of conditional use, but that's dealt with in
That's where I remember talking about that.
Stelt within, in a lot more detail, under the, you know, the conditional use section. Um, and then, now, the, the, the somewhat permitted uses, I, I think, is probably really pretty important for, for you guys, cause, um, you know, heretofore, I think a, a lot of uses were, um, you know, it's either, you know, a, a lot of uses were conditional uses, and, and we tried to reduce the number of uses that are conditional uses and make more of them permitted uses, met, some of which, a- all of which, other than like one or two family residential, um, still require site plan review, but they don't require conditional use review. So the idea is they're, they're permitted, they're okay, you, you can do them. You're pretty confident you can do them, they're not conditional, you just have to have the site plan approved. So you still have to submit a site plan, and it still has to meet the site plan requirements.
For other than one or two family.
Other than one or two family, and those can be approved directly by the zoning administrator, yeah. So we just tried to be clear on that, because, you know, previously, it was just like, it was a permitted use, the zoning administrator dealt with it, everything else was, almost everything else was a conditional use, and it's a bit more of a cumbersome and uncertain process for conditional uses, so again, to try to improve the certainty on every, for everybody, we tried to, tried to straighten that out a little bit. Um, then, uh, three point nine, so the land use matrix, the, the fabled land use matrix. They used to be like the entire middle, middle part of the zoning ordinance.
You need to put the, the key right next to the matrix.
Yeah, so, so, well, we got rid of that, and, well, we, we moved it to appendix A and took it from twenty pages to a little over one page.
Yeah, I mean, I thought it was good, except, I need the key right there.
Um,
Yeah.
So that, that was, that, but, now, the, the, um, a couple, there's a couple of other changes here. One that doesn't really appear, does not jump out at you, because that was the, the section on, um, transferable development rights, that
You just took it out.
We took it out, yeah, so that's, that's gone. Uh, cause I don't think, and I don't think it had ever been used.
Not, not since I've been around, hasn't it?
So, and it was, there were a lot of problems with that, I mean, it's a
It's a little missed.
Yeah, economic, from an economic theorist's point of view, it is brilliant, but from a practical standpoint, it's quite problematic. So I, probably, other than, um, making your zoning bylaw a little bit lighter, because it took up several pages, it probably won't be missed. Then the, you know, the, the, um, the state statute really doesn't refer to cluster subdivision anymore. It talks about planned unit development, and it's kind of really the same thing, except, you know, planned unit developments, like, in a, in a mixed-use district can include, um, a mix of uses, you know, so you can have commercial and residential, if you have, like, if you have a PUD in a village district, you can plan it as a, you know, a mix with commercial uses and residential uses, and, you know, like, something like the racetrack property, if there was gonna be a, a mix of uses there or not, but, um, you know, you could, you could adjust lot sizes and setbacks and things like that. Um, subject Um, subject to all of these standards, so it's, it's the very much the same idea, but all of the language in, in the PUD. Is, is new, um, but the whole idea of it is to just give people a whole lot more flexibility in how they can develop a piece of property. Uh, by varying.
Do we want to continue to say in section three, ten point three, that planned unit developments are allowed in.
Oh, I highlighted that.
Oh, thank you, um, well, not if it doesn't exist anymore.
That's what I thought.
Well, we, we haven't. So we have decided?
Confirm if there are commercial zones or not.
Well, we're gonna, I think we're pretty much agreed on getting rid of the commercial district. Um, but we may have to adjust the village boundaries a little bit, like we might not wanna merge. The commercial in all into RR one, it just might be all merged into the village, but I think, I think we're okay with getting rid of the commercial.
If that's true.
Yeah.
Back in three point seven, you enumerate district requirements and you have a commercial zone there too.
Uh-oh, um, okay, where, which?
Thirty seven?
I'm not at all surprised by that, but which, which section is that?
Three point what?
Well, through three point seven point one in the table, but maybe Mike doesn't have that, he is a different.
Page four.
No, we don't have it in here, we don't have it in this one.
We have industrial, but not commercial.
Yeah, there's no commercial.
Well, then, this.
What did you get?
I got a draft that I printed, that he, that he sent to us.
Oh, this is a two eighteen.
Oh, we're on two eighteen now.
Okay, he's updated it, he's updated it when he did the whole.
You must not have gotten, gotten my email, which doesn't surprise me, cause most people don't, so, um, yeah.
Just getting it.
But we can forward this one, in case there are some other ones in there.
We should do it right away, cause there's quite a few probably between December and, not a lot, but there's a few.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You want me to just forward this to you?
Sure.
Yeah.
Mail?
Do you wanna know my email?
I think I have your email.
Don't have that memorized?
Or do you want it on planning two at town of panel?
We, we can get it to everybody.
At Kane Hibbert.
We get, why don't we continue on, we can get it to everybody, okay? Okay.
Okay, so the next section is three point one one, more than one principal residential building on a parcel. You know, it notes the exception for planned unit developments because you can obviously vary the requirements in PUD. But it, it basically, that's just the section that's fairly standard language, it says if you do more than one. Principal residential building on an individual lot, it has to be located in such a way that if, if somebody decided.
Can later be divided.
Yeah, that it would meet all the setback lot size requirements if it were to be divided. Um, that's just straightening the wording out from what's in the existing one. So referral to state departments, um, that's, um.
Yeah, I saw that.
That, there, there used to be requirements, I think it was reflected in the existing bylaw for, uh, various. Ensundried uses would have to be referred to various ensundried state agencies, but that is, um. Essentially, all those referrals to state agencies were removed except for the, the flood hazard area. Referral that we talked a little bit about earlier. So I took, I took all those out, used to have to like refer things to the transportation agency or the agency of natural resources. Or if you were near some facility, so. And like I, I'm not sure, we, I, I use the term zoning administrator. Zoning administrative officer, we just call it zoning administrator, I think most people just.
That's all we call them.
Zoning administrator. And then, uh, four point one point two.
I have an addition.
Okay.
In that first line, I would add, whose members, comma, as well as their number, I would put down within state guidelines. Because there are guidelines as far as how many members can be on a DRB and where they have to be from.
Okay, so.
And I would just say within state guidelines, I wouldn't, I wouldn't list.
Is it a guideline or is it a statute?
Or it's a statute, actually, you're absolutely right, it's the same with the planning commission.
I think we should say.
The statute.
Pursuant to state statute.
Yeah.
And it's twenty four, something, something, something.
That's very helpful.
Humina, humina, twenty four, humina, humina.
Twenty four VSA, something, something, something. Okay, so reference statute for membership requirements, I will do that.
And I would probably say if it, I read the planning commission, but I would say the same in there.
Jim, in four point one point two B, do we wanna change variances to waivers?
I added it under F, I added, um, a separate one for waivers. And, and I added also PUDs, cause the PUDs, according to this, go, yeah, go to the DRB.
Right.
The planning commission, so you want me to reference the statutory requirement on planning commissioners too, I would assume, right?
Right. It reflects membership, I know on the planning commission, you have to have a majority of people from the town, people can be from out of town. But the majority have to be from town.
Okay.
And they can't be more than nine. Or fewer than three, if I recall.
Okay.
So each member shall serve a term of four years, they're appointed, but then they serve.
What are you talking about, PC?
You're appointed for a term of four years.
Okay.
Okay. So in the, in the planning commission, it, it's not really germane to the zoning bylaws, but it. And B, their references to prepare and update the town plan, I think it used to say every five years and now it's every eight years.
It's eight years, you begin the process and ten years to finalize it, from what I understand.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just keep a list of all the ones that I'm not gonna have to worry about anymore, cause I'm gonna be retired.
Retirement.
Yeah, see?
Suckers, I told you.
Yeah, that's somebody else's problem.
We'll leave it right there, it's eight. That's when we're the.
Walk away with all this unfinished business.
That's right.
Yeah.
I know, I feel bad about that very briefly.
Then that thought passed. All right, we're, we're okay for another ten minutes, huh?
Yeah.
That's, like, everybody's looking at me here like.
We know, we look at the clock.
I mean, no, I know, it's like being back in school, isn't it?
We can roll our eyes, we can do a lot of.
We gotta get through this stuff, guys.
Where's our spitball?
Jeez, I know.
Well, um, yeah, it, so, so the, the, the next one, so there's not, not a lot here, but under. There's not a lot, categories of approval, zoning permit, administration enforcement, all that stuff is, is pretty clear. Uh, the statutory references are straightened out a little bit, I, I guess on the top paragraph, on what is. Page eleven in mine, probably not yours, then. Um, it, we said that the permit activities, the activities authorized by the permit have to. Be started within one year of the date of issue. Okay, not sure what that was before.
Right, where, where are you now? Under four point, um, well, four point, administration and enforcement.
Is that right there?
It's applicability, administration and enforcement, four point two, here it is, here.
When you have to start work.
It was one year, I'm, I'm pretty sure, should have been permanent, it's a, a plot plan, regulations. Within three days, the issuance, uh, shall deliver a copy fifteen days.
It's right after, one year, start, must be started within one year of its date of issue.
Yeah, here it is, underlined as a matter of fact.
Maybe it was underlined in the old one.
Yeah, well, it is, that's what I'm looking at.
I thought you were just.
So, well, so maybe that's not a change, that's not a change, never mind, not a change. And so, um, okay, required application materials, so. Um, information required for a specific review, so that E, um, so. Site plan review for permitted uses other than one or two family dwellings, and it references the site plan review section. Or conditional use review for uses, so designated in any different district, then it references the next section, which maybe is. Should be switched around, but whatever, um, that's the conditional use section, so it just says. You know, you need, you need to submit materials with your application and you can find the details of what those are in those sections. So the conditional use section, again, there's, there isn't, um, this, this is not a new thing, conditional uses. In fact, we have a lot fewer conditional uses, I think, than we used to have in the old bylaw. Uh, and, um, you know, it, then it talks about, see, not, um, four point two, point two, point two, point two, point two, point two. Procedure and criteria for review, A, B, C, D, those are the statutory provisions for conditional use. They're really kind of general and wishy washy bagged things, you know, capacity of existing. Or planned community facilities, character of the area affected, traffic on roads and highways in the vicinity. Utilization of renewable energy resources, a lot of judgment in what those things mean. So, um, you know, the, the bylaw had previously had, and we kind of, um, reorganized and stepped them up a little bit, the performance standards. So it says, uh, conditional use must demonstrate conformance with all relevant performance standards. And the performance standards apply to all conditional uses and a few other things as well, that's. References that section eight point eight. I find that it, it makes it a lot easier to review them if you have specifics as opposed to things like character of the area. Cause everybody kinda sits around looking at each other, it's like, why, you think it's, you think it's having an effect on the character of the area? Or is the performance standards talk about things like, you know, noise and dust and.
Right.
You know, traffic, things like that, so.
Yeah, I like that one, that vibration.
So then the four point two, point two, point two, point four, submittal requirements. So that indicates what has to be included on a site plan. And then additional written material may be requested as follows. So those are, those are things that the zoning administrator, um, can request when the, the application is filed. With the development review board, if they feel like they need more information when they're reviewing the application. Can ask for more information and then recess the hearing and, and, uh, continue the review after they get more information.
I suspect in two point, four point two, point two, point four, there is not a requirement. That these materials be prepared by a registered professional engineer or land surveyor. And I suspect that's because the town wants to avoid additional expense. I can tell you that the value of any of these submissions. Without being prepared by professional is wildly dependent upon who prepares them.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting comment, is I, I recently, um, well, a couple of years ago, I, I went. Did a very similar process with Shaftesbury and that issue came up and was probably, um. Uh, led to more discussion than anything else during the course of that, that bylaw review. And they did wind up requiring that it be, um, prepared, you know, signed off on by a, a, a licensed professional. They, they used words, so it didn't necessarily have to be a, um.
Engineer.
An engineer, but they did, you know, cause Vermont has the site technicians and stuff that can prepare. Site plans with wastewater designs.
Yeah, that was for wastewater.
But, but they, you know, they, it, you know, landscape.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I, I'm not gonna suggest it. I'd prefer it, but I don't think most people would.
Yeah, probably not, although it was interesting because I think that, you know, at lots of discussions in Shaftesbury and then they, they brought in. Um, you know, uh, development review board members who had experience with, um, applications and projects and. You know, the, the, I agree that probably most people would prefer it like this, but they did, they did note in Shaftesbury that there were a lot of problems. Um, like trying to enforce and follow up on things with poorly prepared site plans. Uh, because you go back to the site plan and they just didn't match up with, you know.
Yeah, I've seen site plans with boundary lines right through buildings.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, yeah, so, yeah, it, it's a good point.
I say we leave it as it is and if there's a ground swell before these are adopted, maybe we'll change it.
Can you remember the night at the church? And the guy was an architect and you said, are you a registered engineer? And he said, no, I'm an architect, he said. You remember when the church was going across from us, Drunks?
Yeah.
That hearing?
Yeah.
That guy, they never came back, they had a lot of stuff, but they did not, they had nothing.
They did not come back, I forgot all about them.
He said, uh, are you an engineer? He said, no, I'm an architect, or vice versa, whatever.
Yeah.
So.
Surveyor.
So the, un- under, um, four point two point three is probably really interesting. The site plan approval, because a lot of things now we're, we're, um, suggesting should be not subject to the. The conditional use review, but subject to site plan approval, but the, you know, the statute gives you, uh. It used to, it used to really be really restrictive, you could only, you could only look at. Um, the first, like, three, three things on the list there, under four point two, point three, point three, traffic access, circulation, parking, landscaping and screening. Um, I think they had lighting.
And that's what ours presently says.
Yeah, it's very limited. Um, but you know, the, the statute now lets you look at a lot of other things, um, and I, you don't wanna be. You know, because these are permitted uses, they're things that you're basically saying that you are good and you want there. But at the same time, you want a good site plan, so, um, the statute does allow you to put other things in, so. We added things like, you know, bicycle and pedestrian access and safety, so are there, you know, good provisions for, you know. People walking or, you know, from the road to the property.
I think you ought to include parking.
Yeah, it should have parking, actually. Uh, circulation and parking, that's on B, B. So it's got signs, water supply and wastewater disposal, I mean, those things have to, by state law, those are gonna have to be on there anyway eventually. Erosion control and stormwater management, again, then with the stormwater regs, you're pretty much, those are required. The one that's, the one that's really different is, and the only performance standard that we pull in under site plan review. Is building, siding and design, um, that's one of the performance standards. And that, that, when we get to that, you'll see that as language that talks about where the building ideally should be located on the property. Um, and, and some general language about trying to make the building compatible and, you know, stuff like that. But the, you know, the, that, that one is, um. I think really kind of fundamental to a lot of what you're trying to accomplish with site plan review, you know, so to try to. You know, to try to control more the, you know, the form based design, to deal with the appearance of the property.
Right.
Not, not so much the, the use of the property, you know, the use is okay, but what is it gonna look like? You know, is the building gonna be back behind the sea of parking or is the building gonna be closer to the road with the parking on the side? Stuff like that, so, you know, that, that one is different, you know, um, and it's, uh. It, it provides a little bit more control on the appearance of development, um, for the town. We had talked about that, but we can talk about that more when we get to the performance standards. Like I said, most, most of the performance standards really just apply to conditional uses, but that one, that one would apply to both, the way it's written now anyway. And then, um, other submittal requirements. Uh, required application materials, most of it's pretty much the same, but we added, um, things that basically. Reflect the, the things that you're supposed to review when you're doing the review, so. If you're supposed to review water supply and wastewater, then you need to include it on the site plan, so. And then.
Otherwise, you're, you're kind of getting people.
Yeah, you're kinda making stuff up that you.
Get gotchas, you know?
Yeah, exactly, you wanna see it, so. You wanna, yeah, exactly, you wanna see it, so. Um, the site plan review procedure, you know, it just talks about, you know, that's, their site plans are reviewed, approved by the development review board. They can approve, approve with conditions, et cetera, um. And, uh, cut, you know, decisions made within forty five days, I think there's been some change in the statute about. When decisions have to be made for site plan review.
Different than forty five days?
I, I, I believe that, um, I'm pretty sure, actually, so, um, it used to be that. Actions by the old zoning board of adjustment before the D R Bs. Were forty five days after the close of a hearing and actions with the planning commission for site plan review had to be sixty days. After receipt of the application, so you, you had to make a decision within sixty days. And so, it, it, it was, I think, creating some problems, because maybe there were incomplete site plans and they recessed the application. But then they'd realize they had to make a decision and they didn't, so, so they can, they consolidated and basically made it, um, the same. As for the D R B or zoning board cases, so it's forty five days after the close of the hearing. So you could recess the hearing for a couple of rounds if you wanted.
Right, you continue them.
Yep.
I think you, can, do you think, Jim, you can go out more than forty five days with the agreement of the applicant?
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's a good question, too, um, that, that's happened in, in a, I, I know towns have done that. Um, and I get a writ- written agreement from the applicant.
You file it with the town clerk.
Yep, it's part, becomes part of the record, proceeding, yeah.
Does that need to go in here, or?
It, it's not usually, but I'm not, you know, it could be, hopefully it doesn't happen very much.
Yeah.
But something weird can come up, I suppose. Um.
Well, if they sign it, they're waiving their right to the forty five days.
Yeah.
So then, in section on, um, appeals, and it talks about, uh, it's, again, the, the sta- the sections in the statute. All changed, so we changed those about appeals of decisions of the zoning administrator. And then variances, which is technically in appellate jurisdiction of the development review board. Uh, but those criteria haven't changed at all.
Okay.
And then four point two point five was that new section that, um, I don't know if we ever finally decided on.
Waiver.
What the criteria should be for a waiver, because you have on, um, just before section five, A, B, C. Those things are really entirely up to the town, but the, the idea, the idea of a waiver, you know. A- again, is variances are so restrictive that they're hard to legitimately approve, but there's a lot of small additions, porches.
Right.
Bump out a wall to make a bathroom handicap accessible, or, you know, whatever. A hundred, two hundred square feet, whatever, not a big deal, might not meet, probably wouldn't meet the variance criteria. But you don't wanna be stuck, so you create this new thing called wa- waivers, but you have to have some really specific criteria. To know when the waivers can be approved, so that's what they are now, some towns use different numbers, you know, so. It does not increase the footprint of a structure by more than, you know, could be ten percent, you know, instead of five percent. Five percent or more than two hundred square feet.
Do we have an idea about that, any of us?
Well, that's.
Small.
Five is small, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you have, if you have a.
I think it should be ten.
Well, we, we did, like, yeah, that's, that's small, I'm sorry, if I'm putting an addition on, it's more than two hundred square feet.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, there, there's only, if you put an addition on, again, there's nothing says you can't do it.
Right.
It's like if you put an addition on that doesn't meet the setback.
That's.
That's where you need a variant, that's where you need a waiver.
A waiver, because you can't otherwise comply with the bylaw, so you can build a six thousand square foot addition.
But if it's a foot from your neighbor's land.
I got, I got seven acres, I ain't getting, I'm not getting there anyway.
Yeah, you, you don't have to worry about it, if somebody's.
I'll just buy, I'll buy my neighbors.
Just don't build next to the property line.
Yeah.
But if you've got, if you've got like, you know, if you've got like, you know, fifteen or twenty foot setback to your neighbor's property line. You, you don't wanna build a six thousand square foot addition, but you ought to be able to maybe do a little something.
Right.
So the quote, but, yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing sacred about five percent or two hundred square feet. That's just what some other towns have used, so.
Great, well, we're up to section five and that's gonna begin the discussions of the zones.
Yeah.
And I think that's an important one that we should.
Be fresh.
Tackle fresh.
Okay.
Next time.
So the next meeting, I'll at least bring the maps and the aerial photos in the parcels.
Perfect, maybe the meeting after that, we have Mike and, uh, John Brooker.
And, and then we can, yeah, cause they, yeah.
So we, cause we have to determine the status of the river corridor and everything else. Are we having it, or we're not having it, or we, I think we should have it as a guide to our P A. Um, and the state would probably be happy if they saw it in there.
Oh, yeah, they keep track of them, they have a big scorecard, how many times that river corridor.
Jim, thank you so much, any questions for Jim before we, uh, go through the mail, our last item agenda, I don't, is there any mail?
Just the B, the L C T, it's pretty scheduled.
Yeah.
Which is printed and in your folder.
So then I'll go back, uh, any questions of Mr. Sullivan before we go? And I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Either or.
If no more, if no more discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And he opposed to adjourned.